I'd like to call the special meeting of the North Island Recreation Park District to order. The board just came out of the closed session and so we're on to item number two of the discussion meeting. Comments and reports from citizens and organizations. Is anyone here that...
I'm sure. Since we came out of closed session, you have to state that no action was taken.
Oh, no action was taken during the closing. Thank you, Alan. Comments and reports from citizens and organizations. Is there anyone present that wants to speak on an item that's not on tonight's agenda? So is everyone here for Sierra Creek and also for the fundraiser? Okay, thank you. Okay, item three, unfinished business. There's none. Item four, new business facility rental, the fundraising request. So I understand we have a guest from the Methodist Church. So would you please come up and to the podium and tell us about your fundraiser?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Peter Talamoni and I am a representative on behalf of Pastor Tapabooku and members of the Samhorn Methodist Church here in Sacramento. We are planning a fundraiser on April 27th to raise some money to help our church to build a church here in Sacramento. And so we're asking for the permission to use the facility called right here. So we'll call it a fundraiser for all churches.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
I would like to know if staff has any concerns or issues.
No, based on the loan that was sent to the district requesting for the criteria for the fundraiser to be held here.
And I just asked where your church is located. We at 5401 Tybert Street. But we using the church at the week, 5501 Russell College Street. Just letting you guys know that we have no alcohol served during our fundraiser.
I'll make a motion for the request. I'll second that motion.
You have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? A motion passes. Good luck.
Good luck. Appreciate it.
Alright, we're on to item four. We the propositions to save this year park of number two. Doug Houston is here and I'm gonna turn the meeting over to him for the public comment portion of the meeting. So welcome.
Would you like to come to the chairs over here and whatever everybody feels comfortable with. Before it starts, I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight and do a thank you to everyone here. We're gonna pass it to those over here at the last meeting. You had signed the sign-in sheet and it's a requirement of the grant. So I'll be passing that around to you again in case you let you have already signed it. Seen a lot of familiar faces. You guys are glad for production. This is a new experience to work there live.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Houston. For those that don't remember me from, well, whatever, about 10 days ago. I am what's called a legislative advocate down in Sacramento. I work primarily on parks, open space. I represent groups like, for example, California Park and Recreation Society, Outdoor Industry Association, California Outdoor Recreation Partnership. Anything that dials in the outdoors, getting people outside, improving our infrastructure for the outdoors, I have your guy. So what are we gonna talk about tonight? Same thing we talked about last go around. Prop 68. So as a reminder, Prop 68 was a ballot measure on the June ballot 2018. It was a $4.1 billion park, water and natural resources bond. It was approved by the voters back in June by nearly 58%. And what we're gonna speak on tonight in particular is one element or facet, program facet associated with that bond. It's called the statewide park development program. So of that bond amount, which is $4.1 billion, roughly $725 million of that bond is gonna be available through this program. And this program is designed primarily to create a new green space where green space doesn't exist in the state of California. There are opportunities to rehabilitate parks. There are opportunities to expand existing footprints of parks. But what the scorers or the graders of the grant applications are going to be looking at primarily is new park space. And so that will be the emphasis of this grant. Some of the foundational criteria, and tell me if I'm going too fast or you wouldn't hear me say it. Some of the foundational criteria that really are gonna drive this grant is how much park space is currently available for the residents in a given area. If there's little to no park space, the grant rises to the top. If there's more than three acres, it's potential that the park or the project's not gonna qualify. What are some of the other criteria, driving criteria, some of the economic factors associated with a given area around a park? So if there's some socioeconomic challenges, again, it's gonna rate or grade a little bit higher for those folks at state parks when they're ultimately supporting these grants. A big component associated with moving this grant forward and working, is in fact, working with the community. And coming up with a plan that is reflective of what the community wants. A project that has design elements, components and features that have been brought forward by the community. So unlike grants in the past and programs in the past, oftentimes the funding is sort of, or the project is sort of driven top-down. I mean, your board members working with consultants sort of put together a project proposal and they'll basically give it to the community, say, "This is what we've come up with. I hope you like it." This is in the reverse. This is more organic by nature. So again, like two weeks ago or last week, whenever the heck that was, we're gonna go through a little exercise that's gonna require your participation. And inasmuch as there's a lot of familiar faces tonight, have folks sort of cogitated on what we discussed last time, thought about, "Well, maybe we should do this," or "Maybe we didn't, you know, include every potential element that we'd like to see on this nearly eight acres of parkland." So last week, I talked to this management and I thought even to bring this project home a little bit more, that I asked them to develop these outlines, renderings, that folks can work with me as I'm putting things up on the board. But at the same time, ultimately, if you're going through those elements that we discussed last time and will discuss tonight, if you want to identify where you'd like to see specific park amenities and elements on that particular parcel, here's your opportunity to do that. So again, last week, or two weeks ago, we talked about design features, components, things that folks would like to see on the 7.7 acres and so I'm offering up some thoughts. But I don't want to necessarily direct those thoughts, so I'll solicit some ideas right now.
Is a great park.
So a spray park was a thought.
What's a spray park? A spray park is like, the water shoots out of the ground. We have one at Freedom Park also called the splash pad.
Same thing again.
Interactive water. Yes, sir.
Community garden.
I can take input from the board too, so if you're all ready.
Um, I was, after attending the first meeting, in addition to the community garden, maybe put a California native type of planting either along the creek or a combination of both California natives and drought tolerant type of planting. So having, you know, having some, you know, spur, you know, multiple month, something on the blooming type of, you know, that would be something in bloom, you know, for most of the year out there too. And maybe possible walking trails maybe alongside the creek, something similar to Punta Creek over at the UC Davis Arboretum. And having, you know, make, you know, different garden clients, something similar to what the historic Sacramento cemetery has. They have five garden groups out there. They have dedicated areas of the cemetery. So, you know, something like that.
A little off topic, but is there an active garden group, garden club, anything like that in the neighborhood?
A little kind of garden club I belong to.
Okay, great.
It's on Facebook.
How about a playground?
Alright, the new voice.
Basketball court?
No.
Most cities in the area, they go to the school nearby, just climb over the fence and play basketball there. The hoops might not be there. They take them off or...
Oh, that right.
Yeah, you probably usually go play there if there's a basketball court there.
Okay, great, thank you. Back again. A dog park? Oh, yes.
Alright.
How much, I have a question. How much acres usually is associated with an area for dogs?
For dogs? Correct me if I'm wrong, you guys would know better, but I'd say we're from a quarter acre to an acre.
Yeah. The ones I've been associated with have been a half acre up to five acres. Depends on the size of the footprint where you're putting all their activities in. But I wouldn't go anything less than a quarter to a half acre because then you're crowding, you're potentially crowding more dogs into a smaller area.
I mean, I have dogs too, but if we were allowed to, you know, you can walk your dog on the path and stuff, you know, unless you want to let your dog loose or anything like that.
Yeah, a lot of times with a dog park, you're gonna have one part for little dogs and another part for large dogs. A lot of times they don't interact.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've been to quite a few dog parks in the area because I have a large dog. And I would say the smallest I've seen is about probably a third of an acre, which is very small, up to probably about three acres. And I oversaw one with the city of Napa with the dog park itself. The two of them, one with an off-leash area that was 30, 35 acres. And then a fenced-in area that I believe was five acres. So it depends on how many property you have and if you have other dog parks in the area. But I wouldn't go too small with that. I think that you have problems.
Closest one is Carmichael.
Pardon me?
Closest one around here is Carmichael.
Dog park?
There's one named Rosa that's actually a little closer, but not much.
Really?
Right. Several miles away? Right.
So it's the one at Gibson Ranch, no more?
They have one on the bench there.
Yeah.
The dog parks are all on the trail.
It was last year. I thought I've been out there. Yeah.
I thought that was closed.
Okay.
Very good. Other thoughts? I'm trying to recall, recollect some of the other features we talked about. Maybe like a perimeter jogging.
Yeah, a path around it and some bridges.
Some bridges going across the creek, obviously. There's some discussion perhaps about a pond.
Yeah.
Maybe something with the creek, you know?
Within the creek.
Kind of an interpretive type of trail system where you could have kind of a learning experience for people where they can see this. That I think that Native plants and you might talk about the type of animals and insects that live in the creek that live in the area. Those interpretive energies are used quite well on grants.
Well, I need to try to...
So I have a question. Does anybody live like perimeter of this park, like right there? Good, that's where I'm so far. So for you people, how do, what's your thought of a dog park? You might have a dog's park.
I have dogs and I have both a small dog and a big dog. But we usually take them like...
In other open areas.
In, you know, other open areas that, I mean...
Where there's not a lot of other dogs.
Right.
Or if, or if we do, we'll take them to a park that allows dogs to be on a leash to walk through and play part of that.
Right. But of course, a dog park, they're off-leash and they start barking. And that's why I'm just curious to see, you know, what...
Yeah, I mean...
I have thought too about the dog park. I'm concerned about the summer term. It gets so hot here and what that will look like in terms of the dog feces and other, maybe cats in the area that might get into the dog park area. That might be the, I have cats personally.
Well, I know the ones that I go to, they have like a daily maintenance. And most people who go to their dogs to dog parks, I'm not saying all of them, are pretty good about picking up their dog droppings. But not everybody does. And a lot of everybody will turn around, not notice their dog does something. But, you know...
There's also urine that you can't really pick up. I mean, I understand about the other, but summertime, I'm just concerned about that. It is so hot. Smell. And then, you know, it'll rain for several days.
Yeah, and again, I've been to a lot and I have not really smelled any urine. The parks I've been to, they usually close one day a week, just to kind of give it a day to rest so there's not trampling all the time. And that way, maintenance, if they hadn't do anything large, they can do it then.
And the opening that will go into the neighborhood on the side of the school, to the school and the park?
Oh, yeah. You're talking about the access note potentially? Okay.
It's along the side of Spennelli Elementary, right along the housing.
Okay, so?
Yeah, it's on the line, if possible, right next to the park.
Right.
There's also the chance to create a parking lot off of WAT as well, the way they get parked. And that might be a little challenging because of the creek. But, you know, when you look at it, you certainly, if designed properly, you could maybe put 20, 30 parking spots there and then maybe work out an agreement with the school to use their parking lot after school hours and on weekends. That's, that's very typical in, in public parks is to try to use the existing parking that's already there and use the school parking. Often you'll see parks right next to schools and that's, that's a very common practice.
And then I'll start on another thing backwards. Sorry, can I get that in there? I know that they have one problem, but...
Larry, do you have a sense of parking requirements or something like this?
I don't. I think a lot of it depends on what type of park you have there. If you're going to have a more of a passive park, which is trails and paths.
Turnaround sign.
Yeah, your, your, your parking is probably gonna be less than if you have a very active park of, you know, children's playgrounds, picnic sites, ones that need like a freedom park where you can rent a picnic area. So, you know, parking certainly is gonna be needed. We can't just, I don't think we can depend on school parking lot only because most schools don't like the public passing through their schools to get to a park during their most school hours. So I think it's probably a combination of both, but I don't, I don't have an idea what the footprint is for parking until I think they're a little further along and have a practical idea of where we're going with the park.
Isn't some of the school bar in the park playing?
Yes, in fact, you have, you have that map in front of you? So if I can point something out to you.
So can you pull the screen in? We can't walk across there. We can't walk across there very well.
If I could just show you this real quick and you have a drawing that I provided you. Do you see where these buildings are right here? Right here? That, those are actually on park land. We leased that land to the school district. So you see that we concluded that in as still as park land because it doesn't mean these portables are gonna be there forever. But I think the fact that the school district uses this area of portables may help us with a partnership with them to continue to allow them to use them and maybe park them in this in the park. So again, just that little park right there, I think there's five or six portables. Those are, that's on park rock.
Two other conversations from last week are to be told to everybody else. Had to do with traffic flowing on WAT. And I don't know if that's something that's of interest to folks. Meaning constantly slowing down the traffic, you know, adjacent to the park right there. And I think that's, I think that's a legitimate expense in context of this bond. So I don't know if folks are interested.
Well, I think again, I think you mentioned where the traffic light was gonna be installed. If you close locks in the area.
Yeah, but that's down the street here.
Well, you can have light on sidewalks, for example. You can do flashers, you know, notifying folks that you need to slow down because there's pedestrians or just, there's just, there's congregations of folks.
If you look at the colored, the photo that you have, you'll see that, what if I almost get north to south mixed up? I'm going towards Walmart.
Walmart.
Okay. You'll see there is, there's an area right there. That is the developer who's developing the other side of the road where the golf course was also. He has been required as condition of approval from Sacramento counties that he has to put in a traffic light and crosswalk. So the traffic will no longer continue to go down WAT. They're gonna have to stop. And I'm thankful for that because truthfully, that's probably the only way the people who are gonna ultimately live on that side of the road are gonna be able to cross over to come to the park. And just as a reminder, I think I shared this with you last time we met, the new development there, the Langston Antelope is called, will not have any improved parkland within the scope of the project. So it was conditioned that way and that's why we're eligible, well, we will, as that development is built out, we will be receiving funds from that development that could also be used to enhance any improvements at Sierra Creek. Or as long as we can create a nexus of other recreation amenities within the district, there's possibly we can use those to make improvements and add other amenities to our existing park system. But I say that only because that new development will have some open space, but it will not have improved parkings or improved parks. And that's why we're gonna be doing improvements off-site.
Can I ask a clarification on the traffic light? Was that gonna be a Navajo?
Yeah, I believe so. I have to go back and take a look.
So it's not actually right at the park. It's a little further on. It's here, right?
The corner road's gonna come here and then into here. That was my impression. Okay.
Was it probably a little further way to do it?
And there's a group's sidewalk.
Right. Okay. I mean, if you're gonna do it, generally you like to have that crosswalk below or above your entrance to your park. So not, it's not right there so you don't have a lot of kids and people trying to run across to get right into the park or leave the park. You have to do a little, in this case, a little further north and then you can walk down into the park.
Right. So where I was going with this is if we put a small parking lot there, every time you leave, you have to go south on the lot. And if you have to go the other way, you have maybe U-turn and come back around. Okay?
Yeah, probably not much we can do about it.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. No, if we, if there was a lot of thought invested during the last meeting in the notion of public art and incorporation of public art on the site, on the location. There's things, for example, like where you can construct a wall and then have individual tiles that are fashioned by community members, just like a community wall. There's things, a lot of things of that nature.
I've heard some gist.
Yeah.
I'm helping with the little something in Spennelli. They have a committee for...
They have a school guard.
School guard. I'm just saying, they have a school guard in there and it's like at that access point where you're talking about. Right off the line. So it would be like if we were able to further that partnership between them two and start improving instead of off-site, there's something needed that where some stuff can be negotiated where those containers can be moved or just really starting an access point to the existing community. And then with the parking thing, I grew up next to a park and it didn't have a parking lot. We just talked along the side. All that meant was there was lines painted on the road. Yeah, I would think you could do that on WAT. No.
No, WAT is a parking lot we did.
Yeah, so they're a fair...
If this is a parking lot, we have to get access.
If I'm not mistaken, I didn't put that left turn lane through the rock that leads into this park on Watt Avenue? Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's kind of like people use it to hang a U-turn.
Yeah, yeah.
You made a break in the island?
Yeah, there's a break in the island and that would be a really good place to put in a crosswalk so that the apartments have access to the park right across the street. Otherwise, they gotta go all the way back to Blackfoot or all the way up to Nodle across.
You said there's an entrance into the park?
Yeah, it slows down traffic too from the south.
It would serve as traffic calming.
If you pull out of the park, you couldn't, oh wait, you couldn't go, you still couldn't go across to the north mountain lane?
Well, they could improve that intersection instead of it being a soft U-turn intersection. It could also have a light there.
What I can do is that the next meeting we have, I will pull out of the conditions of approval for the Langston Antelope project and I'll, I can show you on a map and give you very specific what the requirements are for the lights and the crosswalk and exactly where they're gonna go. And those were, those have already been approved by the county and the developer is required to put those in along, I think as a shared with Sacramento County as well.
You're talking about Watt and Nodle, right?
I think so, but I'll double check and I'll make sure I have the...
I'm talking to the, you know what I'm talking about on Watt Avenue, there's a left turn lane. Looks like there's a, it's making a left.
Going south?
Going south? Southbound?
Going north.
Yeah.
North of.
Like right around here.
Just over the creek.
I know where Watt Avenue is.
The people that live here on the south on Watt, go down there and make the U-turn right there and come to us.
That's right here.
Basically, it's allowed that people in the apartments to be able to go south on Watt. There's two exits to that. One is out here on Blackfoot. So most people who are going south, if they're in the back of that apartment complex, they use Blackfoot. But if you're in the front of the apartment complex, then you just Watt Avenue. Well, I used to, I used to have my head...
Okay. Remind me, why, why is that, why is that purpose to a property? Is it just for ease of access or?
Well, maybe not.
Well, it's a, it's a good point, or it's a good location to access the, all these apartments to the park. Cause otherwise, they gotta go all the way to Navajo or they gotta go all the way back to Blackfoot across the street. How else can you get into the park room?
Pedestrian access? But, um, what about my suggestion of art? Folks like art?
That's what I brought up with the community with the kids. I noticed the tiles that I've seen at some parks in Redding, they, they have like, it's a real prominent thing in within a whole infrastructure. You see those tiles, and that's what I thought of, with kids there, it can be something where the community, it's all.
To put art in it just like decreases like graffiti and stuff?
It'd have to be, yeah, designed in such a way where, you know, it would encourage that, obviously. Maybe some sculptures would be nice too. Well, I should mention that part of the grant is, you're looking for employment opportunities from the community too. So to the extent you localize that opportunity, uh, it helps you with your grant application, you know, local artists.
So the community garden can supply the native plants then for the entire landscaping on the park project? Is that one on here?
For the whole apartment on select? Is that what you said?
No, for the interpretive trail going through the park, utilize the community garden group to, uh...
Yes. Well, it's not on here, but, so it's in here. Yeah, any opportunity that we can partner with community members, uh, who can solicit volunteer opportunities, they, they help to create the application.
So the community garden can provide the, all the Californian natives, sort, all, all the plants that whatever the designer decided to get?
Yeah, they'll have an outlet with Californian natives and figure out how to place those.
Just a reminder, there is a, a sign-in sheet that's waiting to pass around.
Right here.
And it's very important, I'll get everyone to sign it, uh, because we have to make that part of our grant applications. If you haven't signed it, please make sure you do before you leave tonight.
All right, any other thoughts? Seems like we have more to ask over there. So, um, the next exercise that we need to go through here is trying to build consensus around, um, the park amenities that we identified. Aside from the basketball, I think everything was included last go-around here in Mount Air.
It's a pretty big park, frisbee golf, maybe?
Yeah, we did, we did discuss that. You need a minimum of probably thirty acres.
Oh, alright.
And it would be in conflict with everything else. Good talk, though. So, any, is there, let's start with vetoes. Is there, is there anything specific on this list that people would bother with? Parking, traffic calming, art, community garden, dog park? Basketball?
Definitely get rid of the basketball. We don't even have basketball courts in North Island. We got excess of those.
Where can I play basketball?
K Park.
But up that way, do we? I, I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, you guys have a facility up there.
What, K Park?
Uh-huh.
Well, yeah, but that's, I mean, it's not twenty-four hours anybody can go play basketball. Usually it's reserved for, you know.
Freedom Park's got twenty-four hour basketball, um, whatever you guys call this, uh, school site behind here, when you guys filled in the swimming pool and replaced it with basketball courts.
Just to clarify, we did not fill in the swimming pool. That was the school district that filled in the swimming pool, just to clarify that.
But the sports district never replaced a swimming pool for this local, more balanced community.
I know. A swimming pool costs about five to eight million dollars. We don't kinda have that much. We'd love to do it. And, you know, grants can help on that, and it's just, it's the operations and maintenance side of things that it would, it would be really challenging. So I'll just, I'll put a question on that.
Wasn't mentioned, Doug, about having shelters with barbecue areas?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Same stuff, just like parking was down there.
Yeah. Since the park itself has kind of like a nice, like a, kind of a beach and then goes down to the creek, it's kind of like a nice viewpoint for itself.
Yeah.
You know, if you have a topography lens, if you put it up closer, you have a nice place to sit and look down.
Oh, you know what's missing?
Yes, what?
Uh, the water fountains.
Spray park. We said that for the first time.
Spray park?
No, not spray park, water fountains for people to drink, drinking fountains and...
Oh, I gotcha.
And the dual-purpose ones, like sunrise podcast, where people drink from the top thing and then the dogs have access at the bottom part of the same fixture.
Just a little comment about the restrooms and water fountains. I mean, I like those too, but they just, I've been noticing that to the I N T O area, that more and more homeless people slowly, that's like, I'm sure that's like an attractive thing for them, and maybe they might, you know, sleep there sometimes over a night.
Well, they're sleeping there right now.
Well, if I could point out something, that, uh, approximately a year ago, the district entered into a contract with the Fulton County Department of Park Police. Uh, our parks are no longer controlled by security guards, these are actually police officers. And, uh, we give monthly reports, and, and while we haven't solved all the homeless issues, we've made a huge dent in it. And it's, but it's a twenty-four hour, seven day a week job. I would say for a park site of seven acres, you're gonna have to have a restroom facility. There's no other place for folks to go, and it's not gonna be convenient for them to walk around or to someplace. So, and, and yes, the, unfortunately, restrooms attract homeless, but there's new designs out, there's different ways of doing that that can minimize, uh, the homeless use, and the beauty of that particular site is, it has great, it has, it's visible for, for the public. So it's not like, if somebody can go hide in the back someplace, it's gonna, you know, if we see a tent pop up, they'll be able to address that quickly. But a park that size, we're gonna have to find a way to put a portable restroom in there. Likewise, I think I mentioned to you, on May fourth, we're dedicating the district's newest park, Cherry Blossom Park, uh, which is part, uh, located behind Walmart. And if you go to that park, that's two point seven five acres. It does not have a restroom facility because the back end of it is private property, and that is known as a homeless area, and we're trying to do our best to keep the homeless from coming in. So you'll see, uh, some new fencing and stuff out there to try to minimize that. But it's also really designed for people who live there, so they should be able to walk from their homes to the park. I'm sure we'll have people making requests for restrooms later on, but again, a park that size of seven acres, definitely we'll have to find a way to incorporate a restroom facility probably near the, if we put parking inside the park, probably right there.
Did you say it was a requirement?
No, it's not a requirement, I'm just saying I, I think that we certainly would be going in the wrong direction if we did not include a restroom for a property that size. There's no place for people to go. If they wanna come there for a barbecue, then either kids have to go to the bathroom, then they'd have to leave the site to go someplace, and that's, that's not the way we want to design that.
Right.
I have a question. Restroom, would there be certain hours where, would it be open twenty-four hours? Would it be closed or locked at certain times?
We, we, we lock our restrooms at, at, at night, and we open them in the morning. That's cool.
I have a thought about, uh, the dog park. Uh, I personally have a husky, and he needs a lot of room, right? I'd love to have a dog park. Uh, when I'm looking at this location, the creek segments it, so we have seven point four four acres, but that's not one section, cause we couldn't obviously put a dog park on top of the creek. Uh, and so I think if you look at the, the southern half, that's the half where we could fit a dog park if we were to do that. Uh, and if we had one for the big dogs, one for the small dogs, we start looking into the kid, that's probably gonna skip more than an acre, and the areas around that then would kind of just be wedged into up against a fence, or I don't know that we have enough space there to put a dog park, but I do acknowledge there is a need for that in our area. And especially with the funding that we will be getting, um, from that housing development coming in, I think we may then look, I would like personally look at other park sites we have and look for a dog park there rather than at Sierra Creek.
Yeah, I don't know how a dark, dog park would be right next to an elementary school when they're out at lunch, streaming, and doing all that.
Well, we talked before that there's probably other, uh, better locations in the district. Uh, we, we, you know, we talk about Freedom Park a lot simply because it's so large, and there's a lot of green area, which actually makes the area of the park attractive. We don't wanna fill in every little green area with something, but K Park, uh, has a lot of available green space. It has parking. Uh, that might be someplace that we look for a future dog park, but I agree, we don't have one, we should have one. And whether, whether, wherever this park goes and the, and the design elements, we're still looking at where else can we find a, a location for a dog park? Yeah.
Well, the reason a dog park is vitally needed in that area is the density of all this apartments and, uh, and the housing project across the way there. Most of these people that live in these apartments have limited transportation. You're assuming everyone in North Island, and, uh, I don't know if you're aware of what the economic status of most of the families in this community are, but, uh, driving their dogs to a dog park when you have a park right across the street doesn't make any sense.
Right, but he's talking about K Park, which is only a two blocks away from there.
Okay, so you're gonna take their little preschoolers from this apartment complex and walk all the way into K Park? Really? That, that doesn't make sense for moms and their little kids to enjoy the park when you have a place right across the way that they can take their dog and enjoy the park.
I, I, I totally agree with you, we need a dog park. I just don't know if that's the best location for a dog park. It's just the way the design is, the creek running through it. I mean, that's just my opinion, that's.
My experience with dog parks, and I built, uh, as mentioned, do you have a number of them? The further you can locate them away from residential areas, the better off you're going to be. And, um, uh, I've worked in cities where we, larger cities in, in North Island where we had one dog park serving the entire community, so it's never gonna be convenient, uh, for everyone. But a, as Alan mentioned, uh, K Park is relatively close to that site, and it does have a lot of the features that, that we would be looking for in a dog park. Fencing, green areas, parking, lighting, so, uh, I'm not saying that's the best location. What I'm saying to you, if a dog park doesn't find its way into this particular park site, rest assured, we are still gonna continue to start looking where other locations are, and we would advertise that for the public to attend so we can get your feedback on various options, but, uh, we're here, I'm hearing you about the dog park, and it's got my interest up because I enjoy dog parks. I have four dogs, so I, I, I like the kind of space that we're running. Uh, so, uh, we will, if it's not here, we will be looking for another place.
And I'll just make an observation, not trying to steer the conversation necessarily, but you, you're, you've got a lot of design features here that are, you're, we're looking to situate on a pretty small piece of property. The dog park's probably gonna be a minimum of one acre, and that will be the central, probably the central feature of that park, and I think the community needs to think about, do they want a dog park as that, as that loci, as that focal point for a park? And it's gonna have high visibility. It's, I mean, it's really gonna be an anchor site for the community. So, it's just my two cents. I like dog parks. Okay. Well, we put just a question mark on the basketball, and we'll keep the dog park in the mix here. Uh, any other party thoughts before we sort of move on and sort of drill down? Is everything else, and I, I don't know if we can include everything on this seven acres. I think it's really gonna depend on parking and how large the parking needs to be.
Well, North Island already has a spray park, so that's not gonna help the competitiveness of this proposal in any way, shape, or form.
You take a half mile radius around the park area, it, that won't be part of the calculus. And if you think that spray park, it's, um, it's, it's not as imaginative as this one probably could be, where you have the community really working on the design features, so.
Right, but what's the goal of this particular grant proposal? To bring things into your community that it's lacking? We're not lacking in the spray park, we are lacking in the dog park.
No, it's really to have a, it's supposed to reflect what your community, that half mile radius around the park, really what wants to see at the end of the day.
And I also think you kind of hit the nail on the head a little bit earlier when you were talking about, you know, a little preschooler and whatnot, mom, get kind of the best of the status of, of the area. You have the, uh, the apartments and all this, a lot, a lot of folks right in there. I think when you look at that spray park, like you said before, uh, you know, it'd be nonsense for those, you know, those people to walk from where they are to Freedom Park. Uh, and I think you hit the nail on the head too, they're just looking at a certain radius around, this park needs that. So in what you were saying earlier, I think the community would be more served with something such as a spray park than they would a dog, dog park. Not that I'm not in favor of, of a dog park myself either, you know, we're all dog owners here. Um, but certainly, uh, you know, and I think that's what we also have to look at too, is, is, we all know, if we wanna be served, you know, what, what is best to be served for the whole community, you know?
And so one of the...
I think you hit the nail on the head.
And so one of the things that came up in that last conversation that's not reflected on that list was, um, a little mini amphitheater with a movie screen wall, so people can have picnics and movies in the park and things like that for that whole neighborhood to be able to enjoy that park. That's another thing that I think in North Island, you know, like the closest one is Gibson Ranch, as far as the wall that you can, you know, do movies in the park yet. And every other park district in Sacramento, um, has been doing movie in the park now for years. I know you guys have one coming up, your very first one, but, um, there's not an actual physical structure in any of your parks. There's no projection wall, there's no little mini performance stage for, you know, those neighborhood, uh, growth out groups or school.